Today is March 11, 2020. It's 7:00 PM. I'd like to call the Columbus City Council meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item will be Letter B, the Consent Agenda. Would someone make a motion, please?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Letter C, a Planning Commission Report. Is there anyone from the Planning Commission? Moving right along.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor, council members, and all staff up there. Last week, most of you were there, so it's kind of hard repeating what we said last week. But we started off our meeting, March 4th, with a public hearing on a request by Zing Lee for a preliminary plat review. His request concerned dividing up his 40.16 acres of residential property, located at 5223 Pine Street Northeast, into two residential parcels, one being 12.35 acres and the other 25.26 acres. After hearing Mr. Lee's requests, the public hearing was open to the public, and there was no responses. Mr. Lee received and acknowledged the 25 findings and 10 recommendations as put forward by Dean Johnson of Resource Strategies Corporation. Mr. Lee also acknowledged receiving and understanding the six items noted in the memorandum to Mink dated March 4, 2020, concerning the plat review. The commission then voted unanimously on approving the plat application and forwards our recommendation on to you. Any questions on that?
Any questions, anyone? I think we all heard it.
That's the way I heard it last week, the way it was. In the second part of the meeting, we then opened up a workshop with the city council discussing the I-35 Commercial and Industrial Zoning District. As you all know, this is an ongoing process, and we are making headway. I don't believe I have to go into detail on what progress was made that night, but it'll eventually get back to you in written form. Our meeting lasted 3 hours, 34 minutes.
But who's counting?
Yeah, but who is watching? And then, lastly, I think Elizabeth said that next week we're going to have a concept review of the billboards that are coming up for review?
So it's a concept from Clear Channel for the column cover. They would like to show the planning commission what they are proposing before they bring in their 23 applications. It might even be half that, maybe 13 applications. We're not sure how many they're going to bring in for their billboards. So this is a kind of a preview, and then feedback for them as far as the concept.
That's what's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, council, would someone like to make the motion for Letter C, please?
So I move to approve the preliminary plat for Lee Preserve based on the findings of fact 1 through 25 in the planner's report dated February 20, 2020, and subject to the conditions in the planner's report 1 through 10 to include the engineer's report dated March 4, 2020, comments 1 through 6.
Second.
Is there any discussion, other than what we discussed last week?
Straightforward.
All right, then call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Number 7, Park Board Report, Mark.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council people, staff. We had two meetings before January 23rd, and we didn't come before you till... Let me see, we had another meeting February 27th. We wanted more information on the playground set and stuff, so we didn't feel we needed to come between there. We decided the north end of the pavilion, there's four pieces of playground equipment in there. One's broken, they're really old, they don't get used. It needs a makeover. So we've been talking about three years for this project, and we finally decided it has to go forward. So we picked out a main set at a cost of $25,100. That's installation and shipping costs. It's really nice. You have a picture of it in your packets?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's pretty cool, isn't it? It's geared toward younger kids. It's also got some music stuff in there, and it's a nice set, it really is. And we thought we'd have the shaded part for parents being concerned about sun and their kids. And it looked really nice there. And then we still have some more room to add stuff, so we decided Harry the Hippo. Who doesn't love Harry the Hippo?
I want one of those.
Everybody just loves Harry the Hippo. So we found him for $1,046, but we still don't have an installation cost. That's pending unless that came through, Elizabeth? Yeah, I don't know if it can imagine to be much. I think the installation of the main project was $4,000, so this one's got to be pretty reasonable compared to that. The funding for this will come out of the Parkland Dedication Fund. That fund can only be used for park improvements, so we've had the money in there for a while. So we're going to use that funding to help pay for these projects. That's it on that. And the second item is roundabouts. We've been talking about that.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, just on the first item, are you ready for approval of the expenditure, or is it just an update?
I got a budget from Ben, and his budget is up to $28,000.
Do you want to take that motion first?
Sure.
Wants to make the motion.
I'll do it, because I like Harry the Hippo. I will move to approve the Park Board recommendation for new park playground equipment as presented in the amount of up to $28,000 to include installation and funded out of the Parkland Dedication Fund.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
And discussion?
What's this going to replace? You said older equipment? Is this going to...
Between the swing set and the north end of the pavilion, there's four pieces in there right now. It's a big concrete enclosed area. They're just like little teeter totter springy things. One's broken, they're super old. The paint's chipping off, and they've been maintenance. They just don't get used very often.
Is this from Accent?
No, that company's closed up.
I know it's closed up. Is that where we bought it from? Is this...
No, no. I don't have that information.
You're talking about the old equipment or the new equipment?
The stuff we're replacing.
The stuff we're replacing was from Accent, yes.
It was.
That, they're really old stuff, those?
The, yeah, the stuff that was in there, yeah.
Okay.
I want to see, though, it's... I want to see it's 10, 12 years old. I mean, it's probably past its life.
And Harry Hippo, where we're going to put him? I see this is on a hard surface. Do we have some type of surface like this to install it on?
There's room inside there. You have to have certain clearances around the equipment by code for safety. So I think Harry's... The main set's going to go a little bit closer to the parking lot, and Harry's going to go in the back, because there still would be a room for possibly maybe another playstation like that to go back in there. But we wanted to slide the main unit over as far as we could so we could add another piece or two in the future if we choose to.
Are we keeping any of the old stuff, or is it all going to get taken out?
It's all going to get taken out, yeah.
All right, so we've had a motion, we've had a second, we've had discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, roundabouts. We've been going around and around for this for quite a while, too, and we finally came up with a plan. We were talking about doing possibly the Prairie Preserve, and we all decided, and we talked to people and got pictures of it, and it just looks like overgrown weeds. Doesn't look very good. So we started doing research on pine trees. Put some pine trees in each one. We were thinking white pines, but white pines, I guess, don't hold up too good near road salt. So there are several trees that do hold up well around the salt and the stuff they put on the roads, calcium...
Chloride.
Chloride. One would be spruce trees. Black Hill Spruce does really well. And another one was a ponderosa. So we're thinking about two ponderosa pine trees on 23 in a Broadway roundabout, two Black Hill Spruces, and then possibly scattering some boulders throughout to give it a more rustic look and also possibly deter people from doing a little four-wheeling here and there. So that's where we're at now.
You think we do three pine trees? Is that what our logo looks like, three pine trees on the logo?
Three pine trees on our logo.
Yeah. Well, there's three in there, but we figured roundabout won't handle three, because these trees get fairly large. That's why we chose two instead of the three. And we're thinking some fairly good-sized trees, as much as we could get a tree spade up there, because they're on a hill. So maybe something big enough with a skid loader, with a spade to get in there. But we don't want something real small, because Christmas time, they might be disappearing. So that's where we're at with that. And that's all we have.
Do you have to worry at all about the roots and the pavement? I don't know how deep the roots are of those. They're not close to the surface. Do you have to worry about it breaking up the pavement?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Jen.
I'm sorry. Do you have to worry at all about the roots of the big trees? Because sometimes if they have shallow roots, they really kind of...
Pines are fairly deep.
Do they? Okay.
Yeah, it's not like a maple. Maples are fairly surface.
Surface, yeah.
They come up, and maybe more towards the... More geared up towards them, a little bit more in the middle instead of on the...
Okay.
Anyway, but yeah.
It'll look nice.
Good question, though.
It'll look nice.
As they get larger, is there any requirement that you'd be able to see across the roundabout to see what the action is, you know, as you're approaching?
There's no... As far as we know, there's no code reference to that. If you go look at some of the other municipalities, some you can't see through them at all. Yeah. Industries need to prune also, too, a little bit. You know, when they get a little bit taller, you can prune the bottom branches if you want to.
Ours are so tight compared to...
They're often built to screen headlights, so you don't have headlights coming through the roundabout.
They're often landscaped to prevent cars from going up and over.
Yeah.
Them as well.
Yeah, that never happens, does it?
So we're thinking that the cost factor for this should be within our budget that we were allocated from the city council from about a year and a half ago.
What was the budget, Mark?
We were budgeted $10,000.
So, Mr. Mayor, does that have to come back for approval? Or is that something also that is already... Since it's budgeted, it's already approved?
I don't know.
It was... They were given the $10,000 budget for... And they were to bring back a design. So they needed the budget in order to bring back the design. And so I think that, at this point, they're bringing back the design for the trees. If you feel that's appropriate, then... And you can change the budget, but that's the budget they were given to work within.
So maybe a motion to approve the trees as specified for the design, so then there's clear action.
Mark, how do we... So it's 10 grand for four trees and three rocks?
Boulders, if we can. Boulders are really expensive. I mean, it depends where you get them. I think our direction to our new... I forgot his name, I'm sorry.
Ben.
Ben. Yeah, I'm trying to remember that, sorry. Ben was going to maybe possibly look into what costs are, check with some of the local people at Forest Police Contracting. You go buy them from a regular tree place, they're really expensive. But he's going to see, check with some of the local people that move dirt and stuff and see if they have any.
And what I'm thinking of is, do we want to okay the 10 grand before we know what the cost of it is? Or can you bring back... Or can he bring back prices before we...
I think you're okay, since you've allocated the $10,000. They've described the design. I just wanted something in the record to reflect that they can go forward. So if you... Is there something you want to come back to you, then they wouldn't go forward. But if you're comfortable with what was described, that can be the plan, if you will.
Anyone?
I'll make the motion. So I move to approve the Park Board recommendation for landscaping in the two roundabouts as presented in tonight's meeting in the amount of up to $10,000 to include installation and would be funded out of the... Is that under the Parkland? No, it was funded out of the budgeted amount that we allocated a year and a half ago.
Is there...
Second.
Any other discussion?
I kind of like to... Can you shop around for trees? Because I've moved trees on my property, and it was a lot less than $10,000 for four trees.
We don't have to spend the $10,000. We were just allocated to use that. So what do you think? This is... Actually, I think we're starting to get some pricing. Was it from Prairie Restorations? And I think they came in... It was pretty expensive.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what we thought, these trees. And it also represents our city logo.
Right.
With the pines. And we thought... Like my... I remember I bought a... When I get an eight-foot one, and I planted it myself, and I think that was like $350.
Right.
You know, I mean, so this is going to be a fairly reasonable deal. I mean, we want to get something, obviously, a little bit bigger than eight feet, but they won't be able to drive a big spade truck up on the hill to do that, so they're going to have to do it with a skid loader, spade it with a skid loader and come in with a ball.
All right, anything else? Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council people. Have a wonderful day.
You, too.
Anyone here for a public open forum? Letter D, Engineer's Report. Mr. Engineer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I've got one item, and I will introduce it, and maybe the city attorney wants to add a little bit for that. This is an introduction of a resolution preparing a feasibility report for improvements on Zurich Street. This is the segment of road north of Lake Drive, extended to service the future Viking Industrial Park and other development in the future. As part of the negotiations on the developers' agreement, they're... Viking Industrial is agreeing to pay $250,000 toward those improvements. They have requested through that negotiation that they be provided the option of being assessed for that cost so they can spread that cost out over time. And so I don't know if... Bill, you want to elaborate any on that?
Sure. Mr. Mayor and council, since we have a developer's agreement, it's not signed, but we're told it's going to be signed, we can waive the public hearing, because we would not have you order the project until you acquire the right of way. So at that point, we will have 100% of the owners on either side of the improvement. And so, under that circumstance, we can waive the public hearing for a Chapter 429 improvement. And the developer was given the election to either have it assessed or pay the full cost upfront. And they're talking to their lender about whether they can wrap that into their project. So they still may decide to wrap that into their project, but to make it, you know, an easy election, we said you could assess it as well. We would assess it as a city.
So in order to assess the property, we'd have to take those steps under the 429 process, and the first of those is calling for a feasibility report. And so that's what this resolution would initiate. That would... I would bring that back probably at the April 8 meeting for consideration. And then from there, we wouldn't look at moving forward with the project till after the city closes on the property. And at that point, we could waive the hearing and just proceed from there, so...
And when do we expect to close? June 1st, wasn't it?
The date for the tenant to be out of the property is May 1st. And so we'd expect within about two weeks of that date to close on the property. So about May 15th.
Got it. So what is the number of the resolution?
I don't know whether... Jesse gave you numbers for resolutions?
No? Do we have to have it, or not?
No, I think if you describe it with enough particularity, just read the caption, and then we'll fill in the number.
Got it. Who wants to make that motion?
I will. Just on a roll, I may as well go for it. So I move to approve the resolution. It's going to be 20-something. Ordering a feasibility report for the North Zurich Street Public Improvement as part of the 429 process.
Is that good enough, Bill?
That is perfect.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Oop, discussion.
Discussion.
What is this project going to entail? Is this going to... How far back are we going with this road? And what are we looking at here? And cost? Are we looking at cost? I didn't hear any of this stuff.
So we approved the basic design work at the last council meeting. The full cost, if we were to put the full road in, we'd probably be looking in the range of half a million dollars. At this point, we're only intending to extend the road far enough to service their proposed driveway entrance, which is probably about halfway up their lot, somewhere in the range of 250 feet. You know, so we're probably looking at a... Maybe a quarter-million-dollar project or somewhere in that vicinity. That cost would be brought back with the feasibility report as far as what that cost would be. We'd also do the, you know, majority of the design on the full street so that we would know, you know, what the future improvements would involve, so...
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Charlie? All right. Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Number 10, Attorney's Report.
I have nothing until the report of the administrator.
All right.
Going in there.
Number 11, City Council Members' Report. Danny?
I have nothing.
Janet? I know you do.
Yep, so I was scheduled to talk about the Sunrise River WMO budget, but I'm going to defer that until we get the information from Anoka County that would help us answer the question about the percentage that Columbus is bearing of this budget. So we don't have to have this thing approved until towards the end of April, so there's no real rush. And I'd rather... I think it'd be a lot easier to discuss it if we have that information. So we're not going to have that. And then the only other thing I think I was going to mention is that I'm part of the Personnel Committee, and we have scheduled three interviews on March 17th for Planning Commission, so we'll be carrying forward with those in a week.
Nothing.
I have two items, I think. Number one, we have a coronavirus program going in the city. It says, "Keep calm and wash your hands." But also, I believe Elizabeth has a more thorough report in her stuff. And also, today, many of us were able to go to the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new hotel at Running Aces. And that was a nice presentation in a nice hotel. So that was a fun afternoon.
So they're officially open now for business, correct?
Yep.
Yep.
You're in if you... If you would like to go, it's ready to roll. So we have a public work report with no one here. Public Information Coordinator isn't here. City Administrator, she's here.
I have actually two things on my agenda. I know there was a short discussion at the last Planning Commission meeting on perhaps having a joint meeting at the next meeting, but then I had some discussion with some of you, and due to scheduling conflicts, we wanted to perhaps move and reschedule some meetings between the Planning Commission and council. And so with that, it was proposed that we do not have a joint meeting at the March 18 Planning Commission meeting, but that we have a joint meeting on the April 1 meeting and perhaps start a little bit earlier so that we have a fair amount of hours to work out, looking at the first maybe draft of the zoning ordinance, and then also starting to work with the design standards. So I did have a discussion with Ben, and he felt, along with Dean, that it would... That timing would work a little better, because they felt that they would definitely not have the first draft for the 18th, but most likely a first draft for April 1. And so if the city council was amenable to that, then we would, again, not have a joint meeting on the 18th. The Planning Commission would hold a meeting, and they would have their regularly scheduled meeting at 7 o'clock, and they would work with Clear Channel on their concept plan. Then we would have a joint meeting, and then we would call the joint meeting for 6:00 PM in order to have a three-hour... Roughly three-hour meeting to get through the ordinance and perhaps start the design standards. With that, I did have a discussion with Tammy Umdahl, who's doing modeling for us based on the new freeway zoning districts. So without the zoning districts and acreages and knowing what uses are, it's hard to do a model. And we had planned to have her here on March 25. So I talked to her, and she said that she would be able to move her workshop discussion. And she was either open April 8 or the second meeting in April. And I want to see it's the... 22nd of April. And so we can do it either meeting. The only thing with April 8 is if we had a workshop, the workshop would be 4 to 6, and then we'd have an EDA from 6 to 7, and then a council meeting from 7 to whenever. And I think that EDA meeting was critical, because you have Columbus the very next day. So that was the reason, you know, that we were having that meeting, so we can make sure everyone's on page with that, because invitations already have gone out, and it is being held at Running Aces, the new hotel room. So we're excited about that. So with that, I wasn't quite sure what you were thinking, whether we move the workshop to the 8th and have two workshops in April, whether we still have the workshop on the 26th. We'll just... There's plenty of things to talk about. I could probably come up with things that we can go over. But we can't get the model done until more of the Planning Commission things are settled, so that we do have to push out. And for Tammy, it didn't matter which meeting or which date.
Well, I would say let's put her on the 22nd.
Okay.
April 22nd, if no one else has a big objection, because then that doesn't jam up the April 8 meeting so bad. We've already got five hours that night.
So workshop on the 8th and workshop on the 22nd?
Correct. Unless someone has...
No, we wouldn't have one on the 8th. You're saying have it on the 22nd instead?
Yeah, have Tammy on the 22nd.
So then we would not have one on the 8th.
And we would just keep the one in March on the same date? We'll just... We'll have a different... We'll talk about different topics.
Right.
Okay.
And do you agree that we'll have a joint meeting on the 1st?
1st of April?
April 4th.
That's the next Planning Commission meeting.
And the 18th is off?
Yes.
Correct.
There will not be a joint meeting on the 18th. There will be a Planning Commission meeting.
Beginning at 7. But then April 1st, start with the workshop.
At 6.
And then on the 22nd is when Tammy... Will she be a part of our meeting? Or are we going to have a workshop on her 1st? And if so, what time?
Tammy will have the two hours, and she'll have a full workshop. Once I give her the model of our assumptions, she will have an entire presentation and show you how the model works.
That's 4 to 6.
And that will be 4 to 6 on the 22nd.
Everybody got it? Got the Board of Appeal, the 21st? Board of Appeal, on the 21st?
On April 21st. I believe, I was told today that there's a problem with it, so stay tuned. That might have to be moved. Not due to Columbus, but my understanding is there is a little problem with the value notices. They might not go out in time in order for us to hold a meeting then.
Okay.
Okay, so we need to call for these meetings. We need to call for the joint meeting on April 1st at 6:00 p.m. for the joint meeting in the Planning Commission, and the workshops are already your regular workshop meetings, so you do not have to, to call for those.
Just the first motion?
Just the April 1st meeting.
Okay, I make move to cancel the joint PC and CC meeting for March 18th, 2020 at 7:00 p.m., and reschedule the joint PC and CC meeting to April 1st, 2020, starting at 6:00 p.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Call for a vote?
Aye.
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 The second thing that I have on the agenda is, as you've all heard in the news, we have the COVID-19 issue, and as it was on the news two days ago, there is and has been the first case in Anoka County. I distributed the information to all of you that came through Anoka County, and Anoka County is the, where I generally get my information, but I also get my information from the federal government through the CDC. And so the poster that you saw the mayor have is, is one of the first posters that came out, and, and of course, it's a really important message that everyone should, should wash their hands. But I thought we would take a little time tonight to go over a few of the items, so everyone is informed on how this would roll out, whether you're talking about meetings, the public, employees, so I figured we would talk a little bit about that. So first, we'll talk about process and meetings, and then I'm going to show you a small video that was released from Anoka County, and then we'll go over some mitigation strategies that the CDC put out today, and then we can, if you have any other questions, we can do that. Otherwise, we'll, we'll be working through this as, as other communities are working through different issues.
So Ms. Mayor and Council, Elizabeth and I met, and the mayor joined us during the meeting to talk about process. If, if this reaches a level where they're recommending that we don't hold public meetings, there would be certain business that could still take place. And the two methods are by, by interactive video and by telephonic meeting, a telephone meeting. We're recommending that we go right to a telephone meeting, because to, really to set up for an interactive phone meeting, it's really a matter of convenience. There's, there's really two levels of this. If, if, say, one of you was overseas or needed to be part of a vote, you're out of town, we could set up an interactive meeting over Skype, but then you'd have to have, you'd have to be in a public place, and that public place has to be accessible to members of the public. And so that's a lot of setup and coordination for something that happens very rarely. For, when you're in a pandemic, you, you have the ability, for emergency circumstances, to conduct your meeting over a telephone call, a conference call. And that's much easier for us to set up, a conference call. We would have Elizabeth probably, as the City Administrator, would remain here in the building, so if members of the public came, first of all, it would be posted, as much advance notice as we could. It would be posted that we're holding a conference call meeting, a telephonic meeting. The number would be provided, so the members of the public could dial in. In addition, it requires at least one person be on site, and that's presumably so people, the public shows up here for a meeting, they can get information about how to dial in. And so that would be our preferred method. We could use either method, but if you're on board, we would, we would not use the interactive video, because it's harder to set up, and, and there's more potential hurdles. And so what would happen in a telephonic meeting is we would continue to post an agenda, we would circulate things electronically, we would have a big, you know, right at the top, how people could call in. And then what's different about a telephonic meeting is we probably limit the number of agenda items, and we would make sure that we take a roll call vote, so we get all your votes recorded, because you can't visually see who's voting for what. So we would have a, we'll work on that over the next couple of days to refine the, the protocol, but that's essentially what would happen if we need to conduct business. In a really serious circumstance, we might just cancel the meeting. That would be done probably in discussion among the three of us. The Council would certainly be informed, but that would be pretty rare that we would cancel a meeting, because then the public's business starts to slide. So, and, and it would be done, Elizabeth, as she said, is in touch with the county, the Department of Health, the CDC, so it would only be truly done if, if we reach the level of high risk of community transmission.
Over the past five days, we've had several, again, communications, and what I've tried to do is, as much as possible, when, when information comes through Anoka County, I've tried to, to get it all to the City Council, but also to all the employees. And so when we look at, as a city government, when we look at this, we have to look at it two different ways. You know, we have city operations where you have employees, and we're coming into contact with the public every day, and we have to look at essential services and what we're going to provide, should it progress. So we'll make plans and make sure that all of critical services are still met, and we're going to still provide those, those services, because we understand what needs to happen in that role. The other role, again, is, is really the public role, which is where we have public meetings and we're giving information to the, to the public. So we're, so looking at two different things. We're looking at the workplace and then the community. So we'll be looking at, at both of those items and then addressing them accordingly. So, and this is for everyone, I am currently, what I'm showing you is the Anoka County website, and they have put out a new video. I've watched it, I think it's a really good video, gives you a really good oversight of the virus, how it's transmitted, and it really gives you factual information. I'm going to, I hope, I was, I wanted to play this for you, and I have been playing with the sound, so I'm hoping that the sound will actually work if it doesn't work. I would encourage everyone to, to watch it. It's only five minutes, but it really gives you a good overview of, of what the virus is and how it's transmitted, and, and those, those things.
So we need to get the facts straight. How does this virus work? How does it transmit? Where does it want to go? And let's protect-
Okay, so I did get the sound, now I just have to get it louder.
So we need to get the facts straight. How does this virus work? How does it transmit? Where does it want to go? And let's protect ourselves. I'm Dr. Peter Lynn. I'm a family physician in Toronto, Canada. The coronavirus is a family of viruses that can cause as mild things as just a common cold, all the way up to SARS or MERS. These are these bad pneumonias that we're talking about. And basically what these viruses are, they look like a tennis ball with all these spikes sticking out of it. And depending on the type of spike, it allows that virus to attach to certain places. So some viruses, they have the spike that attaches to your nose, so basically you just get a common cold. But the SARS virus, and this new virus that we're talking about, has the spike that allows it to attach to the cells in your lung. And when it attaches there, it puts in information to make photocopies of itself. So it uses our equipment to make more viruses.
I'm declaring a public health emergency of international concern over the global outbreak of novel coronavirus.
Most of the coronaviruses live in animals. In this particular case, it was from Wuhan, there was a fish market where they were selling live animals, and the thought is, is that the virus was in a live animal, then it crossed into a human. But then what we found was that people were getting sick in terms of healthcare workers, in terms of family members that were looking after them, which now meant that the virus can pass from human to another human. Just like all viruses, it needs to reach a target, which is your lung, and it has to get there with your help. It has no feet and no wings, so therefore it needs us to move it there. So that's why we keep saying, "Don't hang around sneezy people, because you're going to breathe it in, and don't touch your face, because that's how the virus is going to get in." The masks are helpful, but they're not necessary, because they're leaky. The ones that you and I buy basically have pockets here, so therefore the virus can get in. What the masks really do is they stop us from touching our face. If you're sick, we tend to mask you, so therefore you're not spewing out the viruses to other people sitting around you. The true people that have the real masks are the N95. Those are sealed. These are for the doctors that may be caring for their patients. So in the beginning, the coronavirus will cause kind of like flu-like symptoms or a cold, so people just get the stuffy nose, that kind of thing. But you'll understand that as soon as that virus starts manufacturing in your lung cells, they're producing all these copies of the virus, all of a sudden now you kill the lung cells. So now you can't exchange oxygen, and that's why one of the early symptoms is people get very short of breath, and they tend to have a difficult time breathing, and that's why they end up in hospital. So currently, unfortunately, we don't have a direct treatment for the coronavirus, so we don't have a medication that can kill it off. And so it's really supportive. So in other words, the patient can't breathe, we give them oxygen, help them to breathe. They can't drink, so therefore we give them fluids to support them. Their kidneys begin to shut down, we help them with all those things. So it's a very supportive process. This is a new virus that we've never seen before. So our immune system, our army, are having a hard time figuring out what to do. So usually what we have to do is we make something called antibodies. So these are things that can grab onto the spikes that we see on the virus, and it'll get rid of the virus for you, and that will actually bring you back to good health. So therefore the elderly may have a worse outcome, and of course, the young children. To the babies, their immune system is not so good either, so they may not make those antibodies as well. So just remember, your hands may be with virus. Virus cannot hurt you, because it can't get through the skin, but the moment I do this, now I've brought the virus right to where it wants to go. So let's remember not to touch our hands to our face. So let's say you think that you might have been on a plane, or you might have bumped into somebody that has it. What should you do? So the first thing is to contact a healthcare worker, to tell them that potentially you have it. If you're feeling symptoms and you're going to go into a facility, call ahead, okay? So whether you're calling the paramedics, or whether you're calling the hospital or your doctor, just mention that you were on a flight. If you don't have any symptoms, then what we do is a little bit of a self-quarantine. In other words, we can just keep you away from other people, and so you don't go into parties, don't go with your friends, don't go into public transportation. So we can contain it very easily by making sure that you do a self-confinement, so to speak, for the, let's say, seven to 14 days is the longest incubation time. So after that, if you're feeling well, then you don't have anything to worry about. If we get the facts right, then we don't have to be overly worried, but we do the right things so that we don't get the virus ourselves, and that we don't pass it on to others. And if we look after each other in this way, this virus will have nowhere to go. It needs us to move it, it needs us to make copies for it, and if we don't help it, then the virus will stop. So we have the power to do that right now.
So I have some handouts for you. This is the, this is the handout that was forwarded to me from the CDC. It kind of gives you an overview of the mitigation strategies on what, what you do, whether it's the workplace, whether it's the community. So the first page gives you kind of an overview, and then the subsequent pages gives you mitigation plans. And in emergency management, there are a lot of things that you do upfront. In other words, you, you look at things and you try to make sure that you are ready. So if you hear readiness, what are you doing for readiness? It's things that you prepare ahead of time, years ahead of time, and you practice of what you're going to do for, in case you have an emergency. And then you have mitigation, and we're in the mitigation stage, where we're looking at everything that we can do in order to mitigate that transmission of the, of the disease. And so in that, if you look, there is a section page that says workplace, and then the other one says community, and there's a bunch of others. It says schools and such. And so they give you some mitigation that you can do, or, or things that you can implement so that you don't transmit the disease. So for me, I'm just giving you information, we as a staff will sit down and make sure that we go over the things that we can do in the workplace, so that should we have an issue, you know, we're going to address it. But here at the, in the community, and this is a public forum here, you know, they talk about separation, and while we sit very closely here, there's some things, measures that we can put into place. We can be six feet apart, we can, we can change, and we can spread out more, we can use the other room, and so we can do things that here too, if we want to put in some mitigation measures. And really, this is more about information, but we can certainly talk about those mitigation measures as time goes on.
And so the two pages that are probably most relevant to this group are Page Six, Elizabeth mentioned workplace mitigation, and then Page Seven is community-based organizations. And you'll see the response, you know, preparedness, minimal to moderate and substantial, and those are the things that Elizabeth and her staff are discussing, really as we speak.
So Elizabeth, we don't have to take any, aside from staff working through it, what the issues are and what our remedies would be? We don't have to do anything until we hear from the governor, or the president, or who?
It is true, you know, the governor would pass along any statewide mandates that he has. Otherwise, we get our information through Anoka County. So the Health Department is, the services are delegated to the county, and the information generally comes out from your county, and, and that's where it's come from so far. Other information, more like guidelines and process, that's coming from the CDC, which, again, passing along. But I would say there's, there isn't any motions to be made at this point. This is really more for information, because I think you're going to get questions as to what steps the city is taking. And so we are taking, you know, steps for, for mitigation and preparedness now. There's PRL throughout the, the office now, even through elections. Last week, we did the same, because we felt it was important, as we were having many people come through the polling place. So we did have it on hand there also. So I think we'll, we'll start to talk about measures. There is a rather large meeting next week for all emergency managers, and we'll have more information then on how, should this go further, how things will happen.
Elizabeth, do we have any issue at all with our sick time policy for staff? I mean, we don't have to worry about changing that, so that people don't feel like they're disadvantaged by staying at home if they don't feel well, or if they're-
No, there's, in, in this particular case, you know, employees have sick time, and, and I think in, in this particular case with employees, I think as long as there's some flexibility with, with sick time, I, I don't foresee any issue, because there are some that will continue to travel and, and do their everyday thing, and others will be a little bit more weary about that. Some will want to self-quarantine themselves, others will not, so you have both sides of that situation happening, where if people don't self-quarantine and they have traveled, others might be scared that they haven't in the workplace. So they've talked about split shifts, making sure people are separated in the workplace, spreading out times, limiting hours. So I think there's some measures, especially in a larger place. If you've got 300, 325 employees, I can well imagine how that, you would have to, to look at that, because, you know, lots of people come into contact with lots of people every day. So in our case, we're no different. We have people going on vacation, we have people moving around, so we'll take measures too. But from a council's perspective, as long as you're allowing some flexibility in using sick time, I, I don't think we'll have an issue.
The other thing you might want to think about, I know this sounds kind of crazy, but, you know, there's a distance, what is it, like five feet? Five or six feet? So you might want to put like a little sign by your front window, so that you can kind of maintain that distance between the public coming in and the staff on the other side. I mean, I think that would be a really prudent thing to do. They have them, you know, in every clinic you go to for privacy reasons, but you could just have the same sort of sign that asks people to stand behind that sign until this thing is done.
You know, I've seen, I've seen other places that I've been recently, you know, we have pens at the front desk, and we have eyeglasses at the cheaters and such. I've seen that all removed, and/or, or they have wipes next to them, but now I've actually seen where they're telling the people to take the pens with them and not leave them, because who wants to wipe them down? So it's, it's become a little bit bigger issue. And I think for us, I think that, even as city staff, wiping the count, count, or the countdown is probably going to be something that we'll do several times throughout the day.
One of the things our office is doing is we're transmitting a lot of documents electronically. Now, it happens every day anyway, but the preferred method, at least for the time being, is how about if I send that to you by email? So, you know, that's just another small tactic for-
Any other questions? Then I have nothing further.
Our next item will be announcements and reminders. City Council Workshop, March 25th, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Planning Commission and City Council Joint Meeting.
No, just the Planning Commission.
Oops, say that again.
No joint meeting.
Has been canceled.
Yep.
On 3/18. The full calendar is on the back page. On 3/18, the full calendar is on the back page. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.